Good evening. I'd like to call to order the July 21st work session of the Pecosin Planning Commission. Tonight, we have a presentation by Mr. Horton.
I'm not sure how much of a presentation it is. I gave you the PowerPoint that we used at the retreat back in June, June 21st, particularly where it lays out the district's research and development, general commercial, and R1. I look at like a third or fourth page back. I just kind of use that for reference. What I wanted to do tonight, since the planning commission is pretty, I mean, the city council has pretty much charged the planning commission with responsibility for working on comp plan and eventually zoning changes that might need to take place. I thought we'd do sort of a debrief and a discussion of the retreat and sort of, you know, get everybody's opinion as to what we as staff should do next. You know, at this point, really, two things seem clear to me anyway. Others may differ, and that's fine. But when we talk about the comp plan, we're definitely talking about a Big Woods north. We talked about the west and the east and the current comp plan, but we haven't really given a lot of thought to the residential properties that are behind those. And, you know, I think that's important to do because we know we have environmental factors back there. We know we have limited road frontage back there. And it is possible that somebody may want to put a road through the current R and D section or the general commercial section to get back to access some of those properties. And of course, as you probably know, but if you don't know, we can't landline properties, you know, we have to provide that. So, you know, those are three areas we need to look at in the comp plan. And also, as I listen to people talk, everybody talked about a cohesive, not a piecemeal type of development. And to me, that sounded an awful lot like, forgive me for using this term, a planned unit development district, maybe not the same kind of one that we had that Legacy took advantage of, but one that would speak to what we eventually think ought to happen. I also included a sheet that had a lot of ideas from Vision and some of the proactive, you know, things that were mentioned as well. Again, a lot of talk about intelligent design, community space, planned connectivity, sidewalks and walkways. Probably could have included more than four under there because several of them are similar. There was talk about a public area, not individual, shopping, retail, and commercial, although as several of our planning commission members mentioned, there is a lot of empty commercial space in the city already. So, you know, I think when we talk about commercial retail, you know, we just need to be cognizant of that as we move forward. Natural areas, balanced commercial with environment. Again, a lot of these could have been under the guidance of development. But professional buildings, less housing, more housing. Money is an issue. Two people pointed that out, particularly, I think everybody kind of hit on it, but two people addressed it head-on. One person said we need to look for unique uses, and I would tie that into be in line with what Pecosin is and what Pecosin's strong points are. There was talk of elderly uses, like a transitional type of development, and a need to get the landowners involved. Now, when we go down to the proactivity, you know, the comments that came out, and this is according to my notes, somebody else may have something that I've missed here. Identify undeveloped areas, which there's a fair amount of them, particularly in the R1 district. We need to do a comprehensive study, that's why we're here tonight. Look at public and private partnerships. Use the EDA parcels and build something first. This may go a little bit more towards the community center idea, which I think is being fleshed out by council now, and we'll know more about that shortly. Need to talk to property owners, surveys to citizens, public input, studies to reveal options. And I think Mr. Huxx pointed out that we had a 28% response rate in comprehensive plan on mailing out some of our surveys, and that's actually really good. So anyway, I think the overarching point was to reach out and see what's out. You know, whether it's the property owners or the whole city, you know, those were comments that were out there. Use wetlands as leverage for environmental uses. We know we got wetlands back in this area, and we can use those as more than natural areas. And you can, I think, Lolly, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you could build trails of a sort back through there. And move incrementally, you know, don't build all this overnight necessarily, but get a plan together and move towards accomplishing that plan, even if it's, you know, a few years or even, even in the term, you know, five or 10. We're going to do the comp plan first, I think we all talked about that, and then go into zoning. So, while I mentioned a district that we might want to look at zoning ordinance, we certainly need to enable that through the comp plan first. And with all that, I'll kind of be quiet and listen to whatever anybody else has to say.
I begin with a question. When does the next update of the comprehensive plan do? I think you mentioned it in the retreat, but I don't remember.
Well, the comp plan enacted was enacted in 2018, and it runs through 2038. Every five years, we are required by state to look at the comp plan, and not necessarily to revise it, but to look at it in order to see if it needs. I think at this point, we know we're going to do some revisions, certainly by year. We're in year seven right now, so.
I do think it makes sense to look at updating the comprehensive plan, beginning that process, and letting that process take whatever course it needs to, to arrive at whatever conclusion we need to arrive at.
Sure. And don't forget the fact that after we get through this process, we're going to be looking at the central business districts, and there's probably going to be some changes to facilitate about that as well.
One of the things that I think you hit on it, Wally, is having a plan. You know, we don't want to seal something together, and really creating like a master plan for this area, how to proceed forward, whether that be over the next 10 years, 20 years. I like the wetlands part. One of the things when I was being interviewed prior to the retreat that I cited was the area down by the master gardeners, where the trail goes back in there, and you walk over the marsh, and you see that, which, that area to me really captures what Pecosin is, our wetlands, our nature, our ducks, things of that nature, things that are nice, that people can walk their dogs on or play with. And, you know, I think that what I personally would be looking for in this area would be, I liked the idea of having a place for seniors to go to, to age out, you know, if they have, you know, lived here one year or their entire life, if they're forced to leave their home, it would be nice to see an area that they could go, sort of like Harmony in York County, just to give it an example, but it has a nice walking trail around it, but it still offers that flexibility there. So, like you touched upon, the vacant areas that are grocery stores right now, you know, that's certainly an EDA issue that they, you know, could certainly address in their means, but I would like personally to start off, like you said, Mr. Huxx, to do an update to the comprehensive plan and really get some citizen engagement into this. But phrase it that what we're looking for is, you know, your comments, what you want, what you don't want, having that input in there. And I do like Mayor Huxx's idea of having a community center there that's structured for families and family oriented, and keep that family area of Pecosin. So, to me, that's what's really important in what, how we proceed.
Yeah, I like to kind of, I mean, I agree with that wholeheartedly, especially the senior development. I mean, you know, just having that area. Certainly, the wetlands is very much what makes Pecosin unique. I think it's just, I was thinking about it the other day, just how much, or it's going to take a while for us to actually realize how much Pecosin is changing. It'll be kind of, I'm kind of curious to see how much. Certainly having a plan as we move forward.
How we grow Pecosin in stages and not during periods of time I think we'll have.
And like with the infrastructure here, roadways, fire department, what infrastructure, you know, trash collection, our schools, things of that nature, growing this in incremental stages that makes sense is important.
I'm glad you mentioned that. I forgot to mention that in my traffic. Right now, according to our zoning ordinance, anything that goes through R and D and general commercial to potentially access central parcels would trigger a transportation impact in that. That would be one thing. But what we could do is, is we could broaden that out. We would see any development in the Big Woods would trick. That's just an example, you know, something that's literally different than what we've got in the current comp plan. Of course, we'll get around the zoning eventually, but right now.
The summary was really right on. I captured the retreat. I think it was probably more of a personal impression from then that I had that the, the research and development had not quite played out as hoped. So, well, it's premature to talk about, you know, changing the labels, that that becomes part of a more general conversation for the, okay, what were the reasons that didn't play out, and, you know, how can we take advantage of what the situation is now? So.
I think a lot of it has to do with somebody, Mr. Fai, that mentioned that we're sort of at, he said that in town. I wouldn't use those words necessarily, but we are at the extreme end, and we're pretty far from interstate at this point. And I think that probably is a contributing factor, along with the environmental and everything else that's going on. But I think it certainly is a contributing factor to why it hasn't developed as was hoped. And I think Kerry Freeman pretty much summed it up when he said, "Well, you know, we, we thought this was an area we wanted to go into, and it, as you said, it just had panned out."
I'd say that the other things that have contributed, that there's a lot of research and development available close to NASA, and much, because there's a lot of it that's vacant, like a lot of it.
A lot of it has disappeared already.
Reason that so much of it is vacant, from what I see, is NASA's from in the, say, 90s to present, to larger, more consolidated contracting, and that's really edged out a lot of the small businesses that populated those areas early on. And that's a trend that's not going to change, really. But as we look at that, it might be used to property, you know, in the adjacent.
Sure. I really, I really think as the city council moves through this idea of the, that it's going to shed light on exactly, but we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Wally, I'm looking at the commercial, and, you know, I'm looking at just a hodgepodge of parcels, and many of them are not even accessible. And how would we ever get to the point where we could attract someone to come in here and develop anything when none of the parcels are probably large enough for, to do anything with on their own without some general overall plan, preliminary plan, whatever, of what this could look like? And then somehow, these parcels could be massaged into actual developable parcels, and planning for roads and infrastructure. But right now, well, obviously, nobody would want to buy these pieces because, you know, you can't get to them, or there's 10 different people that own them, and how do we overcome that?
Well, that's really true. And that's where, you know, maybe, you know, maybe we do a survey, you know, geared towards them, try to, either in a later work session or individually, you know, try to talk to them and see where they are in the process. But you're right. I mean, it's hard to look at this whole area and see how an individual parcel or anything would be developed, which is why I think a lot of people were talking about this kind of cohesive idea. But even that's going to be a tall ask, because there's just, you know, what, somebody mentioned that, you know, we need to find out how much is in wetlands. And we probably do. We probably need to get a better handle on what we're looking at.
I think the comp plan's a great idea, but if it's not feasible, practical, I mean, from a development standpoint, we're not talking right now. So, if, you know, master plan would, even if it's, it's just a pipe dream, would at least give us somewhere to start.
There's no question that without the so-called invisible hand, the marketplace, you know, our plans don't come to much, you know, if somebody's not really looking to develop in that area. Right now, the only development I think we're liable to see is probably subdivision on the back. And even that is a little bit specious, I would say.
All those parcels, I think Abbott owns the one parcel that has access to, or used to, on Yorktown Road. That's really possibly, that other parcel was at the end of that.
I know that one's at the end of Oakmore. But now, if you're talking about the residential parcels, those, the big three back there, I'll say, are owned, it's a different ownership name, but it all goes back to the same address. I think it's the same family owns it. And that is largely true, the same concept for the general commercial, where, so that's all the parcels, but one, that front Victory are owned by the EDA. So, yeah, it's 13 parcels, but probably only five or six owners. The Moores own two of them. So, it's not as many people to get in the room as the parcels, as you believe. I can't remember that, I had big maps up at the retreat. I can't remember the numbers exactly, but each parcel is not owned by some different person.
No, it's a lot of folks that own something.
Whether it's us, I say us as, you know, the EDA, of course, the city, we do one little parcel, and the research and development district. The folks at Mid-Atlantic own quite a few, and the research and development district, the Moore families own a few, I believe, in general commercial and the R1. So, it's not one parcel, one person. Out of the same folks, multiple parcels. So, the approach in that, you know, we say, citizen outreach, landowner engagement. Now, that's always the struggle with anything that happens in this city. Well, the city's doing this, the city's doing this, the city's doing this. Well, the land is privately owned, and what's going there is permitted by right. It's a permitted use. So, that situation, if we corporately want to look at something and say, "Okay, that shouldn't be permitted by right there," then we change the code and not permitted by right anymore. But, you know, we have, it's always the struggle, we, the city, the government, and of course, private property owners. People have a right to develop their property, and if they bring us a plan in accordance with the code, we don't deny it. We can't deny it. So, I think that's kind of where the conversation for this, you know, is going to head. What is the next step? Do we, and I'm not suggesting this or saying it's feasible, do we want to be our own master developer, and is the city ready to make offers to purchase every property on the north side of Victory Boulevard? Or are we going to engage the private property owners and get everybody in the room? And then we engage citizens. Well, what do you think should happen on this property that happens to be privately owned? You know, so the struggle is always there. But I think the whole point of the retreat was, you know, do we, does the planning commission, does the city council, can we get to a place where we revise the comp plan, maybe go back in the code and say, "This is what, or these are the few things we would like to see along the north side of Victory as a master development or oasis of development." That doesn't mean it has to happen at one time. This could be a 5, 10, 20, 30-year vision. But the one thing that is certain is the zoning districts that exist now aren't as appropriate as maybe they were 20 years ago.
Exactly.
And maybe some of those uses are not things that the city corporately or our citizens want to see there anymore. So, I think that's where we're trying to get. We know what we have now. Where do we want to get it? And, you know, what do we want to see there, whether that's five years and us doing it, or 20 years and the private sector doing it?
And the tenor of the retreat, I think, was rather sharply in favor of doing some surveys, trying to find out what, at least the immediate property owners, you know, if not the whole city, but, you know, trying to get some input and some feedback on, you know, what their ideas may be.
I think it makes sense to do both, to see what the property owners are thinking, and also to get some input from the community as to what they would like to see there, and maybe try to find some consensus as to what the community as a whole, including the property owners, feel. And maybe that will give us guidance as to.
I think it would be. We will design a survey, if you will, and we'll certainly bring a convention next month that y'all take a look at before we send it out, make sure we haven't missed anything, or if somebody's got a great idea that we haven't included.
I think also to back that up as well is, we can do this work, we can survey the people, survey the community, because ultimately, that, it's their community, and we serve at the pleasure of council, but as well as the citizens of the city. And I think it also needs to be discussed, once we get these resolves, for city council to give us an answer, "Okay, yeah, we're real serious about this, proceed," because I think we can proceed, but if we're doing stuff.
Yeah. I think we may need to look at a joint work session at that point.
Right.
Yeah.
I just wanted to share that I thought that, going back to that retreat, looking back on, I thought was very informative, and I really got a lot out of it. And I think, I think it was well done, and I surely appreciated everything that the staff did in preparation for that, and what has, basically has started the ball rolling, if you will. And the quote, and I don't have it exact, but this is the last kind of big chunk of land in Pecosin. And we surely, we being the city of Pecosin, citizens, planning commission, we do want to get this right. And I think that is, that's kind of the statement for me. And in order to get this right, I really do think that the citizens need to have a say in it. And, you know, that's the property owners, you know, that's the variety of demographics. You know, our city has a contingency of those over 60. But our schools and our kids, you know, are great, and they're important as well. So, it needs to meet the needs of all our citizens. And, you know, it happens to be on the left side of our city as you enter it. So, it's the first impression. It'll be one of those eye grabbers. And it's something that our city can be proud of for a long, long time. So, I surely don't think this should be something that we rush into. I think it should be deliberate, strategic, well-thought-out, a solid plan, if you will. So, but I do support input from the citizens and, you know, revisiting the comprehensive plan. Those are important and critical in this step.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll need to readdress the comp plan, but getting some citizen surveys seems to be something that would really hit on.
Follow on to those comments, and when we're wondering, you know, what kind of response goes, we did all notice that there was a lot of public interest at the retreat. It wasn't an opportunity to address the group, but during the break, they had plenty to say. And I think that as we go forward, we should, you know, think that the citizens are really going to have vested care a lot about this. And so, it's very exciting in that.
And also, Wally, how this is messaged out to the public, how it's messaged so that it doesn't incite fear into them, you know, that total panic, that, you know, we're doing something and we're going to do this like that. I want to make sure it's done, you know.
I think what's, that is the overarching point, is, you know, we, staff, you all, the planning commission, you know, nor city council, nobody wants to jump on making sure something happens on that side of Victory Boulevard quick. Still, Mr. Eggers' words, you know, we article, you know, we should take our time. And that's what we're going to do. We want to make sure we do it right. So, I think we start that next month. Like Walt said, we'll bring you a kind of a draft citizen and private property owner survey, and see what you all think. And, you know, I think as to, you know, not incite fear, we can, we can give it, we can very clearly articulate, you know, this is why we, the city, are sending you this survey. You know, this is a very much conceptual, not planned future development. This is not, we want you to input on something the plan's already been submitted for. I think we can, I think we can do that.
People very much want to be involved with how we grow and where we go.
Right, absolutely. Well, and then, you know, after a survey is developed, and intent, and responses given, and data gathered, you know, that's and data gathered, you know, that's when the, that's the initial public input and opinion. Hope for a lot of response. We had 20%, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it was very good in 2017.
It's great.
I think, I think we could anticipate more now, you know, but that's, after that is when it really starts. That's when we start having public hearings and regular planning commission meetings to discuss joint work, such as city council. I don't think it would be far-fetched to say, probably some type of, you know, town hall, community input meeting. You know, those things will happen. It's just not going to happen in the next few weeks. It shouldn't.
Yeah.
I think it will be challenging in writing the survey to concisely express what the region we're talking about looks. In the survey, typically, it's not illustrated. And I know that I was a little bit unclear about the details of this before the retreat, and that was extremely helpful, but, you know, how can we package some version of that information for the survey? I mean, maybe you glue a QR code on the front that goes to an illustrated something or I don't know what, you know, you can't say, but it'd be a little challenging to make it clear what we're inquiring about.
And of course, we'll make ourselves available to explain to people that might be confused, despite our best efforts to make clear.
George will go door to door if asked.
Well, thank you.
Thank you all.
We appreciate it, Wally, and everyone who has spoken to this and, you know, just Mr. Thomas, your work on this, as well as those, you know, large maps, that was so helpful that day because it's a visual process. So it is now seven o'clock. Do we just roll into our regular session or...
Sure.
Okay?
We can adjourn the work session if we're finished and roll right in.
So we're going to adjourn the work session and we're going to begin our regular meeting and if that's okay with the other commissioners. So I now call to order the July 21st, 2025 meeting of the Pecosin Planning Commission. Please rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure.
Let us pray. We gather here today in service to our community, mindful of the responsibilities entrusted to us. May we approach our work with humility, wisdom, and a commitment to fairness and justice for all. Grant us the clarity to see what is right, the courage to do what is necessary, and the compassion to consider all voices and perspectives. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, could you call the role to establish our quorum this evening?
Commissioner Armentraut.
Present.
Commissioner Peterson.
Present.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Present.
Commissioner Yeager.
Present.
Vice Chairman Geisinger.
Present.
Chairman Shaw.
Aye.
Quorum is established.
Thank you. So we're going to start item C of our agenda, and this is the approval of the minutes. We do have two sets of minutes this evening. The first set is going to be the work session minutes from June the 16th. Has everybody had a chance to read those and does anybody have any changes? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the submitted?
Take a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Armentraut.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Present.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Aye.
Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Geisinger.
Aye.
Vice Chairman, I mean Chairman Shaw.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we're going to consider our regular session minutes from May the 19th. Has everybody had a chance to read those and are there any changes that are needed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Armentraut.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Aye.
Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Geisinger.
Aye.
Chairman Shaw.
Aye.
The minutes cut.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move into our audience for visitors and seeing we have no one in the audience this evening, we are going to close our audience for visitors. And we're going to start with our public hearing this evening, which is to amend the City of Pecosin Code of Ordinances. Mr. Horton, you have the floor.
Thank you. It's going to look a little bit familiar to you. The planning commission initiated this amendment last month, so we're looking at the final language of it tonight for recommendation to city council. I've already talked to this, but as the planning commission is aware, we've had several conditional use permit as of, permits as of late that have been challenging. How about that? This hearing that we're talking about tonight was legally advertised in the Daily Press, ran on Monday, July 7th and July 14th, 2025. Okay, proposed amendment. Section 1 to 7, this will be under A, for uses that are not specifically permitted, but are not forbidden either. If a particular zoning district established an disorder that a use is not specifically permit, permitted, and an application for a minor conditional use permit is made by a property owner through the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator shall refer the application to the planning commission, which will make its recommendation to city council within 60 days. Major conditional use permits shall only be applied for in commercial districts in accordance with this section. And this is new from last month because we had talked about it before, but we left it out of the text last month, with the exception of a property where a conditional use permit has been granted in the past. Think of 185 or the church that's further down in the commercial area, the Rivers Church. You know, they have, they can apply for a conditional use permit because they've had one issued in the past. Application, as I said at the top, you can't make it if it's explicitly forbidden, if I can talk tonight. Unless enabled at the time of master plan approval, application for a conditional use permit in overlay districts, which we have one now, shall not be allowed. What this would do was, would eliminate larger non-residential uses in residential areas in terms of scale and impacts. It would allow for some commercial use in non-commercial districts unless the requirements for major CUPs were applicable, and we'll get to that in a minute. Minor CUPs would still be eligible for a CUP application in residential districts. So you'd still have those applications. New language to be included at the end of 17A, conditional use permit shall be considered as either minor or major. The difference being generally that a major conditional use permit involves a new principal commercial building to be constructed and/or required submission of a conceptual plan, including but not limited to all of the following. And this is going to look a lot like what we did for the gun range. Ingress, egress, property lines, building orientation, dimensions, inclusive of all phases, the parking lot, landscaping, and a generalized location is one of our best management practices. We don't expect them to do an engineer study of, you know, how they're going to work at that point, but we ought to at least know where they are. What have I done here? Oh, this does separate conditional uses permits as major or minor depending on requirements for the contemplated use. And it aids the advocate in knowing what is required of a particular proposal. That's very important. If the advocate knows what they've got to do beforehand, then this doesn't become a voyage of discovery, which, you know, can be quite painful for us and for the applicant. New language to be included at the beginning of section 17B. We're in the same section here. Number one, this talks to it being a complete application. The application shall not be deemed as officially submitted by the zoning administrator until all required information provided by the deadlines established for submission of conditional use permits. Generally, that's 20 to 35 days prior to the next planning commission hearing. After the deadline is passed for the planning commission, additional or modified materials shall not be allowed. Should additional or modified materials be submitted to city council, the application shall be remanded to the planning commission for recommendation prior to the additional or modified materials being considered by the city council. So, once deemed officially submitted and not before, the application shall be advertised for public hearing before the planning commission in the manner prescribed by the city, which of course is planning commission recommendation, city council approval or denial. The effect of this is it requires a complete application prior to, shouldn't be a "to" in there, prior to advertisement for public hearings. Eliminates late submission of materials without adequate time for review, and I think we're all familiar with that. Provide due process for all materials to be factored prior to a recommendation or decision. What that basically means is that if all the information has to go through the planning commission, then you've given all the information you do consideration. And that's, folks, that's about it. That's it for the changes. I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Paul. Does anybody have any questions?
One quick question. Requirements are outlined somewhere. I can't seem to find them. I don't know if they're in this section or a different section. But it says all the requirements shall be met before the application shall be considered submitted. Wonder if, make sure we're crystal clear about what all the requirements are for both major and minor applications.
Well, minors basically are not changed very much what they are now. Basically, it's plot of the property, a drawing of what's going to be there. It may not rise to the level of a conceptual plan. But for a major, where we're talking about a new commercial use in a commercial district, you know, we're asking that they show us where the commercial building's going to be and basically all the characteristics that we'll, we would need to look at. Now, of course, it is a concept plan. It may not be, it might be one of those things that could be a little bit fluid as long as it's in substantial conformance, but basically we want to know essentially what you're proposing. And that's been an issue that city council in particular has wrestled with, with one of our two CUPs that are going on currently, the gun range. You know, we need some information in order to make an informed decision.
Hear what you're saying. I'm sensing a lot of shades of gray are involved in what the requirements actually are. So that was my question in particular, is that spelled out?
Well, I mean, when you say shall be considered as either minor, the difference being generally, I mean, there is some general stuff here. And zoning administrator, in certain circumstances, can make an exception. But this is what we pretty much expect going forward. If you're going to do a new commercial building, guess what? You're a major, you're a major conditional use permit. If you're going to need a conceptual plan, you're a major conditional use permit. Do you require approval by the architectural review board, like my storage did? You're a major conditional use permit. Let me figure out this. Do you need a traffic study? Well, that's a major, that's a major conditional use. Do you have a unique impact concerning noise? Think of the gun range, noise, that was a big thing right there. Needs to be done by a certified professional. And really, all these things need to be done in order for the planning commission to make a recommendation or the city council to be able to make a judgment on it. So that's what we're trying to do here.
So I guess from my point of view, I'm looking at this as describing what a major is, but I think I'd really like to see is these are the requirements that have to be submitted, and I don't see that anywhere, and that's what I'm asking.
Does the requirements, it really depends on what's being built or what's being offered up, right? I mean, as far as...
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, one or two of these things may not be going on. But the point is, if any one of these things is going on, then it's a major conditional use. Now, if you want to, the difference being, instead of generally, we should say, the difference, we could say something like, major conditional use permits involve, boom. So, I mean, if you want to get rid of the generally or the, you know, the ambiguity, we can certainly do that.
What I'm trying to avoid is the same sort of situation that we have now where the requirements are vague, someone submits some requirements and then we get into a planning commission hearing and figure out that we don't have enough information to make a decision. That's my concern.
And, Wally, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the point of application submitted, that staff's going to take this information and vet it, make sure that going forward, that's what...
It's not even going to be advertised for public hearing to all.
Right. So all of the information that's needed, staff's going to work with that person to gather that before we even see it, so they know.
Right. And if there's any ambiguity or anything, we have a zoning administrator, and the zoning administrator will make that decision.
Okay, right.
Okay, fair enough. So that process will be, that'll be handled by staff?
That'll be handled before you guys ever see it.
To decide whether the requirements have been met or not. Okay, I'm good enough with that.
Yeah. Okay.
Wally, would, I know having the conceptual plan prepared by a professional here, I know, puts a lot of stress on some... How do we know the plan that they're submitting or the concept is actually feasible and could be approved by staff later on? Other localities, they pretty much require almost an 80% site plan.
Sure.
Or, you know, that would be approved and ours going to presenting a rendering so we know exactly what we're approving. You know, is this parking spaces, do they need retention upon, and what is the...
That would be reviewed by staff before it ever gets advertised. In other words, we would look at a commercial building for whatever it is, a gun range, how many parking spaces does that require? Are you showing enough parking spaces on the plan? What's the setback? Are you showing the building in the setback? That's bad. You know, landscaping, we have landscaping requirements. Are you, do you have an area for landscaping? Maybe you don't know where every tree or shrub is going to go, but do you have room for it? Building orientations and dimensions, if you're in a commercial district in the city, you're going to have to go to the architectural review board, and you're going to need to have that information in order for the architectural review board to make a decision. So, you know, I agree, it's not to the level maybe that some people require, but frankly, I don't think, I'm not sure that's where we want to go as a city right now. That might be seen as too cumbersome to the advocate. We're trying to, we're trying to make requirements but not go...
My point, we might actually get something presented like that, and, you know, accurate.
Tell me, you seem to look like you're... Yeah. I think the, you know, what we have now is a very loose and liberal conditional use permit process. The city has always basically held, you can apply for anything, anywhere, unless it's explicitly forbidden, and with exception of language that's existing. We don't really have the authority as staff or the zoning administrator, who is the manager, to say, okay, this application's not complete, but pay us your 600 bucks and you can go have your public hearing before the Planning Commission anyways. That's what creates the issues of the past, not just one particular application where, here's my application, well, we recommend you do X, Y, and Z. Nope, no thanks. I want the Planning Commission to consider it. Eight months later, seven meetings, and re-advertising of a public hearing 10 times, we may be able to have something in front of City Council that they can make a decision on. Whereas with the new language, the zoning administrator is going to have the authority to say, I'm not deeming the application complete for this reason, and I need to see as close to basically an approvable plan that you can give me before we advertise this for public hearing. And I think this gets us in a good spot to require those things. You want to develop a wooded parcel and put a new commercial use on it that's not permitted by right, here's what we need. Where are you going to get access from? How big is the building? What's it going to look like? How are you going to orient it? So I think what you're, what you're saying, we need to require this language, it's broad enough that it's not cumbersome on the applicant. If it's, you know, not something so, I don't mean extreme how I say it, but like the gun range. You know, we don't want, we're not trying to make people spend thousands or tens of thousands to apply for a conditional use permit that they may or may not get. On the flip side of that, we need to get away from half-hearted, not enough information, staff is still receiving things three days or the day of your public hearing. We need to get away from that.
Right.
And that's, you know, that's the point of this language, and it gives us as staff and the zoning administrator specifically, the authority to say, your application is not ready for consideration. Here's what we need to see, and basically, here's why. So I think, I think what Wally's drafted gets us as close to that as we can get for where we want to get right now.
For me, the term officially submitted kind of encompasses that for me, because I visualize that as the city staff has vetted that, if you will, and checked it, scrutinized it, and it meets, you know, it meets the necessary items, if you will, to move forward before it ever comes to us, that it's already been vetted thoroughly.
Any comments? So, what's the pleasure of Planning Commission?
I believe that we approve this as written up. Recommend this, sending this to City Council.
Our second?
Second.
Thank you. I need to also close the public hearing. I do apologize. Thank you, Thomas, for that. There was nobody in the audience, so that sort of threw me. Apologize.
Understood.
Great. Laura, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Armentrop.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Aye.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Geisinger.
Aye.
Chairman Shaw.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, we are going to move to the next item on our agenda. Let's see here. Election of Officers, and we have four officers that are up for election. Thomas, what is your preference in how we proceed? Chair, vice chair, clerk, and deputy clerk, or do you have a recommendation?
What the Planning Commission has done traditionally, and it's the will of the Planning Commission, but take a vote for chair and vice chair separately, and then you can elect your clerk and deputy clerk in one motion.
One motion? Okay, great.
We have recommended, in the memo, of course, those persons to be appointed clerk and deputy clerk. Crystal St. Pierre, who's seated by Laura tonight, joined our office last month, and we recommend that she be appointed as clerk. I think that recommendation comes most strongly from Laura, but lucky for Laura, we also recommend she be appointed as deputy clerk.
I think that's great.
You know, so she's not leaving totally yet, but that's our recommendation for clerk and deputy clerk, and of course, the will of the Planning Commission for the chair and vice chair.
Great. So let's start with chair and vice chair. I appreciate that. Thank you. So...
Mr. Armentrop?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Jaeger?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Geisinger?
Aye.
Chairman Shaw?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, we need to have a vote for our clerk, who is going to be Crystal St. Pierre. Welcome. We are excited to work with you. Welcome to Pecosin. And our esteemed deputy clerk, Laura Noos.
Noos.
Noos? That's why I never say Ms. Noos, because of that. So I would like to make a motion to appoint both of them as clerk and deputy clerk respectively. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Armentrop.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Jaeger?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Geisinger?
Aye.
Chairman Shaw?
Aye. Very good. Now, we're going to move to Item F of our agenda, Communications Correspondent from Staff, Wally and Thomas.
I don't have anything this evening. We'll see you in August and look forward to another discussion. I don't know if we have a regular session item for August, but it'll likely just be a work session in August. Likely just be a work session in August. No promise there. That's all I have.
Thank you all for your direction on the, mentioned little swing into action. I don't really think I've got much, anything else to report. Probably occurred to me when I hit the parking lot.
That's how it works. Mr. Armentrop, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, thank you.
Hirsch?
I would just like to thank staff for all their work. As usual, it's very well-prepared, very well, makes, certainly makes our job easier, so just wanted to mention my appreciation for that.
I'd like to echo those sentiments. Seems to always go smoothly because of the work y'all put in behind the scenes. We greatly appreciate that very much. Certainly sorry that I missed the retreat. A lot of good information that I...
And I'd just like to reiterate that the retreat I thought was great and very enjoyable and learned a lot, and that I look forward to working with the community, the citizens of Pecosin, as we move forward in the next year, two years, three years, and down the road on the north side of Victory Boulevard.
With that, we have no other matters on the docket for this evening, so I declare the meeting adjourned.